Board of Education meeting. I'm here to order presentation. Please take your seat.
Our allegiance is to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I entertain a motion for a consent agenda.
Madam President, I move that we approve the following amendments. Number one, additional certified parental action to consideration. I'll need after.
There is second. Second by Jennifer. Any discussion in favor concerning this? Motion, please. At this point, it looks like we have a public comment by Dr. Tim Panikin. Would you be welcome to come up?
Sure. Am I the only one who signed up?
No, I have one case of paper right now.
Well, even if some of the others didn't sign up, I think there's a number of people here that came with some of the same concerns that I have. My concerns are related to the schedule change decision that you made last week. I want to start first with a sincere apology that I'm here after you made the decision. I really respect the process that you go through. I know it can be frustrating on your part when you feel like maybe you've reached out to try to get the information out in the community. But I do very much believe that I'm not alone in my surprise about the fact that the decision that you made was imminent. I spoke with almost all of you. I spoke with multiple teachers at the high school. My wife spoke with Dr. Carlin. And I had a really productive conversation with Charlie Stillian, who's in charge of the scheduling for the buses. What's troubling me tonight is how much of the reasoning that I received from many of you about the change was anecdotal reasoning. And I'm here to question whether anecdotes are the best way to make a decision that has such a profound impact on so many parents and so many students. For every anecdote about older siblings needing to take care of younger siblings after school, I can follow that with anecdotes about the danger of longer unsupervised time for teenagers alone in the house or around town before their parents get off work. Or anecdotes about unsupervised young children who have been left at home who have to get on the bus in the morning after their parents have already left for school or for work. For every story about a student missing an extra hour of school for sports, I can personally give you another story about students arriving home from sporting events after 1:00 a.m. and now are faced with having a turnaround time of five to six hours later to be back in school. And though they might be physically present in school, I would question whether or not they're mentally present. For every parental schedule eased, there's another parent who can't get their kids dropped off at school in time in the morning to make it to work by 8:00 a.m. For stories about families who need the extra income from a working teenager, I can show you families or teachers struggling to keep kids engaged in school and now must do so with even more intensely sleep deprived students. And for sure, for every teenager who does well early in the morning, I will show you 20 who don't. And if for every Kansas school you wish to point to who starts earlier than us, I can show you high performing, non-Kansas schools who may have moved their schedule to a later start time and have actually become national advocates for the rightness of their decision. But these are all anecdotes. And although useful, I would argue that it shouldn't be the basis for a decision. What I want to focus on is what I think is known and most importantly, the critical questions that I think have been left unanswered. The bus system is truly chaotic. I had a direct conversation with Mr. Stillian and it made me really appreciate all the balls he's trying to juggle to make it work. But having said that, do we not all conduct crazy driving schedules personally, knowing that it's the best thing for our kids? But not trying to minimize the need to look at this, there are some things that I think have not yet been answered. First, there's a general acknowledgement by everyone I spoke with that the change in the bus schedule will be revenue neutral. We are unlikely to save any money. The stated goal is to minimize the burdensome rides on the bus, but I think it's important to agree on the definition of burdensome. Have we done that? What are our goals? What is too long on the bus? Is it a half hour, 45 minutes, an hour? Let's define what we wish to consider too long of a ride so we know what we're trying to accomplish. There has been no measurement of the number of kids who experience what could be a burdensome ride. We have guesses, but there's been no counts of the number of kids that we're talking about. We're making a huge disruptive change to the schedule, but we don't even know how many kids we're helping. Conversely, there's no projections for the number of kids who will have a greater amount of time on the bus. There is an assumption that the schedule change will reduce riding time, but no one can say with full confidence that the assumptions have been verified, much less quantified. Quite simply, we have no defined measurements of how the schedule change will affect our kids' time on the bus, either positively or negatively. Now, it's been implied to me that the parents and the teachers were involved in the recommendation that was made to this board, but in fact, the committee that was drawn to consider the options that Mr. Stillian presented consisted of high school principals and administration. There were no students, no teachers, nor any parents on the committee. An eighth hour has been discussed as an enticement to consider earlier start times when in fact no plans have been made for any such schedule. Consider too, the likelihood that with an earlier dismissal time, sports and activities will now have a chance to start earlier and perhaps even conduct longer practices. How much student participation will there be in an outwardly early zero hour? Or conversely, how much student participation could there be in an eighth hour if it conflicts with after-school activities? If a potential eighth hour is truly a viable outlet to ease the burden of earlier start times, shouldn't the eighth hour be planned and implemented coincident with the scheduling you're considering so that we have the assurances that an eighth hour will actually occur? If we're willing to have 800 kids start earlier such that we don't conflict with after-school activities, isn't there a chance that the same conflict logic will be used such that an eighth hour will never happen? Significantly, we're going to reduce the amount of sleep for over 600 kids at the school. To me, this should be the most important consideration. Every other consideration should be secondary. I've had the sleep argument dismissed as research that could say one thing today and a different thing tomorrow. Dismissed because the kids can just go to bed earlier or dismissed because it would be good to teach kids to be early risers. But I really want to encourage you to look at the information about sleep deprivation yourself. I think if you spend the time giving the research a hard look, you'll give it the weight it truly deserves. The studies are not here going tomorrow research. In fact, it's the recommendation of the American Academy of Pediatrics that school not be started before 8:30. Not 10, as many of you were told, but in fact, 8:30. It's known that sleep patterns for teenagers differ from adults and going to bed earlier is not an option as they simply lay awake in bed trying to get to sleep. Repeated studies not only show that teenagers need nine to 10 hours of sleep, but in schools with start times before 8:30, over two-thirds of the kids will not even get eight hours of sleep on a school. Over two-thirds of the kids will not get even eight hours of sleep on a school night. Academic performance is tightly and directly related to adequate amount of sleep. More alarmingly, sleep deprived kids have a higher incidence of obesity, a higher incidence of depression, and higher incidence of rates of drug and alcohol usage. As critical as the academics should be to us, this is a larger issue of public health. And I have to ask you, as parents, if your pediatrician made a health recommendation for one of your own kids, would you do the opposite? This is a tough time to be an educator, a tough time to be a board member, and it's a tough time to be a parent of kids in school. We're constantly forced into compromised decisions because of financial considerations and lack of resources. You have before you, board members, a unique opportunity to do something for the kids that's good and it won't cost you anything. I hope you won't miss the opportunity. Thank you.
That was the speaker that asked. Yes. At this point, I entertain a motion to approve consent agenda.
Madam President, I move that we approve consent agenda. I'll need one through four.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor concerning this? Motion, please. Move on to the curriculum report. Library services, gentlemen. Just for those who are interested, after the curriculum reports, there's the board opening discussion where the board usually addresses other issues and where they come up.
All right. Good evening. Brown and I had the opportunity to join the library media specialist committee. And we spent many times, or many hours discussing possibilities and solutions for the challenge that Dr. Carlin presented to us. And we had the inquiry tonight, and they're going to present to you the solutions that we came up with. And anyone that was on the committee, would you please stand? It is release day, so. Yeah, well, you asked us to be here, but it's all right. We'll go ahead and turn it over to Cory. And then at the end, if you have any questions, we'd like to answer them.
Thanks for having us here today. We are here to discuss what we're doing now and how we can make it better. Instead of just looking at it with how can we provide services with less certified staff, we wanted to show how we think we can make things better as they are and even better if cuts are necessary. On this slide, you can see the committee members. And Penny is going to talk about the research.
And this is what our program could look like if we had, if we were modeling after a highly effective school library. Some of the things that research has shown is that in order to have a highly effective school library program, you need a full-time certified librarian in each building, collaboration between the teachers and the library media specialist, flexible scheduling, parent support, and adequate funding at $13 to $15 per student. And this is, the media services is one of the areas that's probably received some of the greatest number of research studies. And they have all been consistent that if you have a certified librarian in the school, then student achievement increases. And if you have a cut in library services, student achievement decreases. So it is, there is a lot of research that says that. And this is a handout that we have for each of you, but this is a summary of the school library and student achievement studies that are out there. And improved reading scores, if there is a librarian in the school increases and that even when you factor in poverty and decreases in staff, that still is a true statement that if you have a librarian, student achievement will increase.
Currently, in USD 457, many librarians are assigned to extra duties. This impacts their ability to maintain the library collection and the services they're able to provide to teachers and students, such as running intervention groups or subbing various extra duties as determined by the building principal. And this varies building by building. Some buildings pull their librarian to sub quite frequently, some don't do it at all. There's no consistency through the district on how the different principals are running things. Currently, there's no parent support. That went away several years ago. And this has caused much of the teachers' collaboration time with libraries to cease because we can't any longer leave the walls of the library to go into classrooms. If we do, the doors of the library have to be closed and locked to students who want to come in. And it's also caused many to think that the librarian's job's simply there to check out books, which is very much not the case. So, yeah. When we close the, when the librarian does get to go out into a classroom, we have to close the doors right now. What we see, if we're able to keep 100% of the librarians, we'd like the libraries to become learning commons, which are lively places that are the heartbeat of a school, not quiet little study areas where no one's allowed to talk, but places for active learning and engagement. At the secondary level, the library will obviously have a stronger focus on academics, but you can still incorporate a lot of that learning commons idea and have the kids want to come to the library as a fun place to be. Ideally, each building should have at least some part-time parent support so that the teacher librarian can leave the walls of the library and the library can stay open for students who need to come in and check out a book.
And we also have new standards for Kansas teaching standards. And ideally, again, we would all have the opportunity to teach those standards and use them while we're conducting lessons. So we hope to be able to implement our standards. And that would happen with a 100% staffing that from kindergarten through high school that students would have the ability to be taught the standard.
Yeah, right now, it's difficult for the librarians to teach all the standards just because there's no support in the library for that while we're teaching. Often, we have to close the doors when the kids who want to walk in.
Right now, kindergarten through fourth grade, we teach in our libraries, but one of the fifth, sixth grade centers also conducts lessons. But after that, it becomes very difficult for the librarians to conduct lessons when you have a large number of students and the librarian can't get out of the library in order to go teach lessons with the classroom teachers. And I also had, this is part of the new accreditation that our schools have to go through, and this just happened to be one that a group I was working on was assigned to. The part that is highlighted is actually the job of a media specialist. Model digital age work and learning representative of innovative dynamically changing global and digital society, including digital citizenship and responsibility. And that actually is what is supposed to be occurring in the library with the librarian or in the classroom with the librarian, but at the very point in time when those lessons would be most effective with older kids, we no longer construct kids because the librarian is not available for destruction, which is surprising in this district as much emphasis as we put on technology that we don't provide those types of lessons for our kids as they pass through the school district.
One of the other ways that we see an improvement can be made is by the creation of a library department head. This is not a district new job creation. It's just something that a current librarian would do. It would fulfill the greater goal of making our school libraries exemplary. And they would do things like plan and develop professional development on in-service days for the librarians and train and paraprofessionals that we were able to get on universal duties so it would help make all our librarians more cohesive and assure that the librarians are able to align their lessons to the new standards that hopefully will be coming out next year. A new job description also probably needs to be created. The current one is a little outdated. And this should focus on the librarian being a leader in the building, an instructional partner, an information specialist, a technology specialist, as well as a teacher and program administrator. Right now, the current job description just has a lot of paraprofessional things in it, like checking out books and things like that. I'm not 100% certain how valid the ESSA is today, but if it gets to stick around, there is language in it to support the funding for school libraries, which is pretty awesome, I think. We did come up with some plans that if we had to make cuts, we were asked to do a 75 and a 50. The math didn't quite work, so we have a 70% plan and then a 56. At the 70% plan, we suggested that the K6 schools share librarians as well as the K4 schools so that K6 is combined with K6 so that the librarians can use their lesson plans from one school to the next and they're not having to switch the way they work. So two schools would be covered by a librarian and they would ideally spend a week in each building. Part of our reasoning for this was the start time issue has been solved, so.
Also scheduling.
Yeah.
Because some of the buildings, scheduling's difficult because they also share PE teachers and music teachers and art teachers, so scheduling would be a problem. So if you're covering, if you're at one building for an entire week, you should be able to schedule all of your classes.
We thought it would be wise if an effort were made to even out the number of students that a librarian was responsible for while keeping the librarians teaching at the same level. So we threw some examples together of what it could look like. Obviously, that would be up to you guys and our best. Playmell is already halftime, so it wouldn't affect that building. Like Abe Hubert and Jenny Parker could combine because they're both K6 buildings. Parent support would be necessary for any of these plans to work because when the librarian is gone, you wouldn't want a library closed for an entire week at a school. So a paraprofessional could help keep things running as far as book checkout goes in the school that the librarian wasn't at. And it could look something like this, where four buildings, four librarians would cover the top eight buildings. Those are K4s. And then five and six at the bottom are the K6 buildings. We put the numbers on the slide for how many students are in each building. At the 70% plan, this doesn't affect fifth grade and up. Except, well, it doesn't affect fifth and sixth grade centers mainly because those schools are so big already number-wise. You can see that fifth and sixth grade are around 450 each. The middle schools, one's much larger than the other already, and then the high schools sitting at 2,100. But this would take us from 15 full-time equivalent librarians down to 10.5. Ideally, this would free up a little bit of funding to provide the funding to hire some parent support. And in addition to what you would need at the elementary just to keep things running, it would be wonderful to have some parent support brought in with those dollars for the intermediate and middle schools so that they could become more of a model program and let, at least in those buildings, let the teacher get out into the classroom some more. And Penny will discuss the 50% plan.
The 50% plan is actually a 56.5% plan. And again, the elementary librarians, we should have two buildings. And the main change is that with the 50% plan is that the fifth, sixth grade centers, you would have one librarian covering both. The seventh, eighth would also have one librarian covering both, and the high school would remain. So that would be a large reduction.
And then the numbers show how many students a librarian would be responsible for in each of those scenarios.
Those plans are only possible if we have parent support. If there's no parent support, the libraries would be closed to everyone because the librarian is not there. And if full-time is not possible, then at least part-time would be, would help. A full-time parent in each building would allow some collaboration to still be possible. But again, at the elementary, we would be conducting only half as many lessons. So collaboration would be difficult. The pros with these programs, one of them, and we could do that with no matter which program, is that it would be nice to have a library department head. So that would help. The cons, high stress level with more than one building, multiple buildings with different principals, and that invariably has different expectations. It will be difficult to be part of a team when you're only there halftime. Difficult to establish relationships with students when you're only in a building halftime. And when you start getting huge numbers of kids, we won't remember, unfortunately. I have about 400 kids in my building and I try to remember what kinds of books they like to read. It would be very difficult if I had 800 students to keep track of. And without parent support, the library would be closed every other week. And because, if you're only in a building halftime, then you only have halftime instructional time. And currently, we have two extra days for work outside of the regular contract, and we would need extra days. It takes a long time in order to conduct the inventory of all the materials in a library. And there's no way that you could do two buildings in two days. Reading and study programs would be difficult if not possible. You would lose a true library program. And for a lot of kids, it would become just a place to check out books. And research states at schools that reduce library staffing see a drop in achievement scores. And the job description needs to be rewritten. It would be rewritten if we're only in halftime.
This is just a visual representation of the three types of programs we just laid out. In the model program, the librarian's able to do collaboration, would be part of the building leadership team, have instructional time, as well as be the administrator of the actual library. The current program is what we're doing now. Some collaboration is possible depending on what building you're at. Instruction happens K through four on a regular basis and a good deal at fifth and sixth grade centers. And then obviously, the library administration part would never go away. And in the 70 and 50% plans, all you're left with is very limited instruction and then somebody who's there to check out books. And in this one, you, the top pie chart is the, shows the different things that a library media specialist does. We do instruction and help with research projects. There is parent support that helps us get those things done. Check-in and checkout is a large part, obviously, with students needing books. The administration of the actual facility, building leadership, and developing literacy. And then the bottom one shows what goes away if librarians are only in a building halftime. The instruction piece, half of it goes away. Building leadership would just not be possible if you're in two different buildings. That would be very difficult. And developing literacy in students would be greatly impacted if the librarian is only in the building halftime.
And do you notice how many students? If we go to 70%, it affects 3,038 students. If we go to 50%, it affects 5,059 students.
The librarian truly affects every student in their building. And it is actually school library month, so we would love to invite you to come up to any of the libraries in the district and just pop in and check out, see what we're doing with the kids and explore the amazing things that really are happening in a lot of our buildings. Any questions?
I have one. On the technology side of things, one of the buildings have not really put that on the library department. department, right? It's really a separate sort of resource for systems and computers and that kind of technology support, right?
Yes, I think what the, our library media specialists are sharing too is the technology group that's been meeting, one of their plans is to come up with a digital citizenship curriculum. And that curriculum, they'll go through curriculum council, and we'll have to determine how that curriculum is delivered. But that, I think, is one of the charges that that committee is working towards. And it very well may be that the librarians or the staff members in the building that could be a part of delivering that.
Currently, there is no instruction in technology, which is why some of us have taken it on because while there's no instruction K through 4, official instruction, if you're following the core curriculum, they're expected to type their reports and expected to give PowerPoint presentations, but there's no instruction. And the classroom teachers have no time to teach any of those things. So in some of the buildings where we have access to the computers, the librarians have taken on all of that instruction.
Well, that was very informative. We really appreciate you coming and talking about what you've been doing. There's been amazing, great tasks that you've been doing.
Madam President, I might add to thank the committee. I know you've spent a lot of hours. Again, the purpose is, this is the third report the boards heard on the, on very similar. You've heard first from interventionists, and then from instructional coaches, then from the library media group. And this really isn't a budget issue, at least at this point, but this is an issue dealing with the number of unfilled positions we have in classrooms and the question of can we do these programs with fewer certified staff and what would it look like? So I appreciate the work you've done, and I know it isn't easy. We, there is no dissatisfaction with this program or any of the others. These are all valuable programs for students. But the research is clear that the most important factor in the quality of the student's education is the classroom teacher. And we're working really hard recruiting, we're working hard on retention, we're working hard on a lot of things to try to address, filling that gap, but this is one of the, one of the questions we felt it was necessary to ask as we're beginning our preparations for next year. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your work.
Thank you for all the great material.
So the purpose of our presentation is today is to just give you kind of an update of the work that our committee has done so far, the policy recommendations we've come up with thus far, and the homework recommendations we've come up with thus far, based on, based on research that we've collected. When we're done presenting and kind of going over what we've come up with, if you agree with the direction we're going, then we would bring this back to more of an official formatting as far as how it would help in the board policy. And, or if you have areas that you would like us to look into further, or things you want us to check out a little more, then the committee can gather together again and look at those, look at those things. And then if this, you agree with the policy and we're able to move forward, we're looking at making these changes possibly for next year. And then we would like to, next year, gather feedback from teachers, parents, and as well as students on how well this is going, and any changes that need to be made, any issues that ever come up that we didn't foresee. And we're looking at possibly doing that during the first parent-teacher conferences, as well as the second. They usually do a parent survey, so that would kind of coincide with other things parents are doing. Not put any extra on them and allow us a community place to collect some data. Just kind of a preface before we get started, and then we'll finally talk more again. I have several committee members here to help me present, so, and I have messed up their names, so I'm so sorry. Ashley Euler, correct, and she is a parent that served on our committee. We have Amber Doyle, and she teaches at the elementary level. Becca Burnson, who teaches at the intermediate level, and then Rock Rajni.
Did you got it right?
Yep. Who teaches at the high school level, so they're here to present as well. So when we started the committee, these were the objectives or our goals for the committee. We wanted to evaluate our current homework policy, gather feedback on the current practices of teachers within the district. Research to gather information on effective homework practices, evaluate similar districts' homework policies, and then update our policy to best address the needs of our teachers, our students, and our parents. So an email went out district-wide to all certified staff with those objectives or tasks, asking for any volunteers who'd like to serve. And then it was also listed on our school website for parents to volunteer to join, as well as in the paper. Everyone who did express interest in joining was put on the committee. We started with about, I want to say 50, and then initially showing up and actually attending, what almost sounds about 31. So we had a wide variety of people who were on our committee. We had teachers represented K through 12. We had interventionists, coaches, some admin, librarians, counselors. We had three parents, and then also several of the teachers were parents as well. And then we had three district-level committee members. And then I did, before we kind of get into our formal presentation, our, one of our committee members wanted to kind of share her perspective, and we didn't want to give her official slides, so she's just here to have a share what she thinks.
Okay, well, as she said, I'm Ashley Euler. I am the mom of several students here in the district. I have twins that are juniors, a freshman, and one who'll be a kindergartner next year. As a mom, I can tell you guys horror stories about my kids in elementary school. You know, like spelling homework, keeping them up late in the middle of the night. I've got, you know, now with my high school students that maybe come home from a sporting event or a, you know, a meet of some sort, and they're getting home at midnight, and then they've still got homework to do that they just couldn't do on the bus because of the distractions. I was really excited, honestly, at the chance to volunteer on this because we don't always have a lot of parents maybe that are even invited to do these things. So I was really excited to be able to be, be on that committee and have a say in the future of the home-based learning assignments, and then also hear the objectives of the educators because I'm not an educator, I don't have that perspective. So it was really nice to hear what some of them had to say. As a group, our goal was to create a cohesive homework policy that allows students to develop the necessary independent study skills, but at the same time, we want to respect what they have going on at home. They have, you know, their responsibilities, their family time, other commitments like that. And we also felt it was necessary to consider the number of kids in our district who are maybe lacking that home support to complete those assignments outside the classroom. Our current policy was implemented in the 90s, and a lot of it was still applicable, and it still seemed to be okay, but it really didn't reflect the most current research. So we felt the need to expand on not only the policy, which is very kind of short and sweet at this point, but we made some recommendations for different grade levels as well. I think we developed a well-rounded policy.